Would you please call, a roll call please.
Okay, Ms. Barnes.
Here.
Mr. Coleman.
Here.
Ms. McHerny.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Van Hoozen.
Here.
Mr. Weber.
Here.
Thank you, uh, please stand if you may, saying the fudgably. The fudgably, since July of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Minutes from the council meeting of May eighteenth. Thank you, Mayor. I believe everyone has received a copy of the May eighteenth, twenty twenty-one council meeting minutes. If there are no disputes or potential changes, I will go ahead and make the motion to approve the minutes of city council meetings held on May eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. Ezra, this is what they're reading.
I have discussion on that. Mr. Smith?
I'm sorry?
I have discussion on that. After the last council meeting, I spoke to Todd France of Prac. He confirmed that the survey he conducted was on, on the various river entry parking locations was over the course of a week. I'd like the minutes to include this correction, or I will not vote to approve them.
Okay, so, um, does anyone want to make a motion regarding the minutes with that amendment or without?
Let there's a motion pending.
Oh, so we need a second?
Second.
Roll, uh, any other discussion? Roll call. So just to, to make certain, we have a motion pending on the meetings at minutes as written. Correct? Correct. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Barnes?
No.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. McHerny?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Okay. Letters, communication, citizen concerns. I do know we have some citizens with concerns. They are going to speak after the public utilities portion of the report. So now let me forget that. Um, any other letters, communications, citizen concerns? Hearing none, the mayor's report. Um, as everyone knows, the governor has issued a ruling or things take effect on June second, which is tomorrow. So, um, consistent with that, we are moving forward with, uh, opening up of city offices and other departments. And so please check social media and, uh, public and to the, to the media, any information we can get out about those events that are opening and how we're moving forward, consistent with the governor's order. Uh, next council meeting, uh, we probably, probably will not have pucks glass separating us all. And, uh, if you're vaccinated, certainly feel free not to wear a mask. Uh, but we appreciate everybody's, um, we appreciate during the period of the pandemic, everybody's cooperation and assistance, uh, wearing masks and, uh, behaving consistent with the mandate as we move forward ahead. We were able to have in-person means, uh, unlike a lot of organizations that had to do it electronically. So I want to thank, uh, council and the ministry of staff and actually the residents who came to the meetings for, uh, for keeping us social distance and also making sure that they were wearing their masks when appropriate. So thank you very much for that. Um, I do, as a personal point of order, want to point out that, um, the next council meeting, uh, that will be our director of finance last meeting. And, and we cannot say enough, and I will have lots more for his, for him to hear about how much he means to the city of Perrysburg. But I do want to take this moment to, for a second last meeting, because we only have a couple, we only have one read to be read by another entitled only. So I want to thank him for all he's done for the city of Perrysburg. I'm sure council agrees with that. But, uh, we'll talk about that more next time. But I don't think there's, uh, enough opportunity to say how much he's meant to the city of Perrysburg and to me personally. So I'll end my report there. City administrator?
No report, Your Honor.
Finance director?
Other than to say thank you for the kind words, I have no report.
Excellent. That's the longest report you've given in a couple of.
Don't push it.
Uh, law director?
No report.
Thank you. Uh, president, oh, president of council, before you make your report, I do have a recommendation, a review just reviewed for Roberto Vila, for the planning commission. Sorry, throwing out the rest of the uninspired, uninspired term. Thank you, Mayor. With that, uh, we, as everyone was present for our appointment review committee, it was unanimous, uh, approval of him. Uh, so I will go ahead and make a motion to appoint Roberto Vila to the planning commission.
Second?
Discussion. Roll call.
Hey, Ms. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. McHerny?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, president of council? Thank you, Mayor. Uh, one thing I'll say real quick is, uh, Dave, if you want to reconsider retiring, you still have, uh, maybe a small window here if possible, but we definitely will miss you. Um, on the, under the president council report, uh, we did have, uh, Mr. McCollis from KCS Consulting, or come in and do a dispute of our bid approval for the station number thirty-eight improvement. I know each of us wanted to take some time to review the dispute and the facts that were presented to us, um, as well as do our own internal research. So if anyone would like to make a motion to reconsider the approval of the bid that was done through Lathrop, uh, this would be the time to do so. Uh, if no motion is made, um, or carried through, uh, we would consider the initial award to Lathrop as an accepted.
Mr. Smith, um, I have one question. Have we signed the contract with Lathrop?
No, not, not at this time.
Okay. And then, um, I would say that I would move to reconsider our bid.
All right. Motion on the floor. Is there a second? Hearing no, uh, uh, second, uh, motion, uh, does not have a vote, does a rules of order. So we'll move forward. That will be the end of president of council report. Thank you very much. Committee reports. Finance and economic development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I have no report, and our next meeting is a week from tonight, June eighth at five thirty. And, uh, as, as my first year as, uh, I, you picked a bad year to leave me, David, but, uh, it's very helpful to me, uh, helped me out here this year, and I really appreciate it. So that's all, that's all for me.
All right. Thank you. Safety committee?
Thank you, Your Honor. I do not have a report either. We will be meeting, our scheduled, next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, June the twenty-second at six P M.
Thank you. Recreation committee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next meeting is June eighth at six thirty P M.
Thank you. Land zoning?
Uh, no report, Your Honor. We meet on June nine at five thirty P M.
Thank you. Personnel committee?
Uh, yeah, I do have a report. Uh, we held a meeting on May twentieth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, I was the chair. I was present. Along with me was Mark Weber. Uh, Tim McCarthy was absent. Also present were Bridget Cabot and Kate Andretto and Kelly Schelfer. Um, the minutes were approved. Uh, then we discussed council's proposed position of clerk of council. Ms. Cabot stated that, uh, it was council President Smith's idea to put this item on the agenda. Mr. Coleman asked what the administration's desire is. Ms. Cabot said that she does not see enough duties to meet this full-time position. Mr. Weber agreed. Mr. Coleman said that we need to advertise for a recording secretary position. He suggested tabling the clerk of council position for now and said that potentially the recording secretary position may blossom into a clerk of council. Ms. Andretto asked that the committee suggest an hourly rate for the recording secretary position, since the pay range for that position has not been updated in over a decade. Mr. Coleman suggested fifteen to twenty dollars per hour. He also suggested that we reach out to colleges with public administrative, uh, administration school, uh, to see if any students are interested in the position. Uh, then we moved on to proposed updates to code section two sixty-six. Uh, Ms. Andretto distributed those ordinances and, uh, repealed ordinances from section two sixty-six for our review. Uh, we're going to discuss those at the next meeting. Uh, then we moved on to Zashin and Rich Wage and Compensation Study. The committee reviewed the wage and compensation study prepared by Zashin and Rich. There was discussion about the positions that are not in line with other communities' wage ranges. There were several items the committee wanted to see added to the report, including years of experience for employees holding the position and gender. Ms. Cabot said that she is, uh, she will see if someone from Zashin and Rich is available via Zoom for the next committee meeting. Uh, then we discussed salaries for mayor and council. Mr. Coleman stated that while we have a salary survey going on, he thought it would be a good idea to discuss salaries for mayor and city council. Uh, he reported that Bowling Green is in the process of raising city council salaries to automatically increase, uh, as the OPR's minimum salary requirement increases. This is set to begin in twenty twenty-four. Mr. Coleman said that he thinks that is a good idea. Regarding the mayor's salary, Mr. Coleman said that the expectation in Perrysburg is that the mayor have a presence or to be accountable, and that in his opinion, the current salary does not reflect a lot of accountability. He said that he is thinking it should be, uh, somewhere between forty-five and fifty thousand. There was a discussion about city council voting on these changes or having it go to voters. Ms. Cabot noted that the last increases in two thousand seventeen were approved by city council. The administration said they will check on the deadline to get issues on the ballot. There was no further business in the, six oh six. Next meeting is Tuesday, June twenty-third, twenty twenty-one at five P M. Nothing further to report.
Thank you very much. Public utilities? Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we did have a meeting on May twenty-sixth that was called to order six thirty P M. By, by, by Chairman Jethro Smith. Committee members present were Jam Attorney and Barry Van Hoozen. Also present were Cat, Bridget, excuse me, Bridget Cabot, city administrator, and Alice Gossi, director of public utility. Uh, we approved the, the meeting minutes without objection. Uh, the next item was a presentation on H two Ohio. Uh, Joy Mullin, ex the executive director of Ohio Lake Erie Commission, Matt Lane, the of Ohio Department of Agricultural Soil Sciences, and Dr. Chris Winfield, director of Ohio Sea Grant and Ohio State University Stone Lab, were present via Zoom to give a presentation regarding Ohio's phosphorus reduction goals for the Maumee River watershed. They gave an overview of government-wide H two O initiatives to create a long-term water quality solutions. They said that the most notable problem is the harmful algae bloom in the western Lake Erie Basin. As of two thousand eight, Ohio's portion of the Maumee River watershed contributed approximately two point five million pounds of phosphorus into Lake Erie each spring. Uh, and research indicates that a one million pound, forty percent reduction of Ohio's watershed spring phosphorus load will dramatically reduce the harmful algae blooms in Lake Erie. They explained that H two Ohio's goal is for Ohio to contribute no more than one point five million pounds of phosphorus for the Maumee River watershed into Lake Erie each spring. They said that over eighteen hundred farmers representing over one million acres have something to up to adopt at least one of the ten best practices. And the committee members followed up the presentation with a series of questions to, to these presenters. Mr. Smith asked if the initiative is utilizing any of the techniques contained in the Chesapeake Bay Order from the Obama era. Dr. Winfield said they have very different systems and they're learning from each other. Uh, Ms. Mullin said that they have no opinion on that order. Their directive is to reduce phosphorus load by forty percent. Dr. Campbell is also present. He said that he would have comments for the next city council meeting, which we'll have them, uh, speak after this, um, report. Uh, Mr. Smith said that, uh, he will distribute this slide to all the city councils so that it can be discussed at the next meeting. Next item was the Fort Meigs Road multi-use path feasibility study. Mike Gramsa, engineer from Bergman, reviewed the feasibility study done regarding a multi-use path in Fort Meigs Road. He said the study covers from Echo Junction Road to Sutton Place. He said that as recommended by ODOT and the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials, multi-use paths should have a minimum width of ten feet. Mr. Gramsa represented two options. The first option is to put the multi-use path on the west side of the, the road, uh, with the estimated cost of eight hundred twenty thousand dollars, which would include the cleaning of the ditch. The second option is to put the multi-use path on the east side of the road. However, additional right-of-way would be needed to obtain. The cost is one point one five million dollars, and that does not include cleaning the ditch. Uh, he said that all vegetation would be removed from the ditch, but it would be back within a couple of years. Mr. Smith asked if there's any concerns with the gas line that runs through the area. Mr. Gramsa said that it goes through the easement and it would just have to be worked around. Mr. Smith said that this does go slightly past Sutton Place. Mr. Gramsa said it goes to Sutton Place. He would recommend running the multi-use path up to state route sixty-five on the south side of the road with a crossing at North Ridge. There was some discussion regarding funding sources. The committee agreed that option one was the best option and recommended that we look at a timeline permitting and funding sources. Ms. Cabot said she and Ms. Gossi are meeting with the city engineer, and they will add this to the list to be discussed. Uh, next item was sewer credit tabulation. Ms. Gossi reported there is no big credits in the last month, and total was four hundred seventy-one for the month and a total year-to-date of, uh, thirty-three hundred dollars. In other business, Ms. Gossi said that the twenty twenty report of C S O is on the city's website, which is the combined sewer overflows, and the public information office, sir, will be posting each incident. Uh, Mr. Smith asked if the grant program information be also included to remind citizens that funds are available. Uh, we did adjourn at eight ten P M. And our next scheduled meeting is on June twenty-third, twenty twenty-one at six thirty P M. And as I had mentioned in the meeting, we would like to have a brief conversation, uh, on the resolution as well as, uh, what we heard from H two Ohio, and I would love to hear from the, uh, Lake Erie Water Keepers as well this evening. Very good. Uh, I want you guys, uh, Dr. Campbell, to come up, and, um, I understand somebody else is going to do the speaking, but, uh, that individual, appreciate it.
Sure. I want to thank the council and mayor for the time that you have given, the issue which we've discussed and the review of related information. It has been very heartening to notice the interest that people have. I would like to introduce Sandy Ben, who is a waterkeeper. She will give a, a brief presentation, but I think you will find what she has to say very helpful. And I ask you to remind that the waterkeeper is a grassroots organization. And I am on the board. The board president at the moment is a member of the Farm Bureau and an officer, officer in it. I point that out to, to, to mention the board represents many backgrounds, many interests, and, um, and does not represent anything other than a grassroots interest. With that, I'd like to introduce Sandy Ben.
Thank you, everyone.
Uh, just for the record, I'm sorry to interrupt. Would you just mind staying at your, uh, address, because we already have your name?
Sure. Sandy and Ben, um, thirty-nine hundred North Summit, Toledo, Ohio is the organization, and my personal residence is at sixty-five.
That's fine.
Okay. Okay. So you've all seen the slide and who we are. Um, we're a grassroots organization for fishable, swimmable, drinkable waters. And quite frankly, this presentation was really prepared for Timocog, uh, for a short synopsis of what the Lake Erie Resolution, executive order resolution was about. Can you go to the next slide, please? So I just want to start out by saying, I've been working on the algae. We live on Lake Erie. We built our home in eighty-seven, and we started seeing the algae in the late nineties. And in about two thousand five, it got really bad. And we saw, we've seen since then, promise after promise, year after year, that something was going to happen. I'm of the belief that, you know, we're best off if we copy someone else. If, that it has had some success, and we'll look at that. But Dr. Reuter was the retired executive director of the, um, Ohio Sea Grant Program, highly regarded person. And in a May first article, he said that there's no significant progress in the lake. And that's exactly what we're experiencing. Next line. And actually, there was an article in this last, and I didn't bring it up this evening, but I think May twenty-eighth, there was an article in the Toledo Blade where Dr. Reuter reiterated that statement again. This is the history. The only place in the country that we really know where there's been progress in reducing algae significantly is Chesapeake Bay. What happened there was after many years, um, the crab and oyster industries tanked. They went out of business, and people were very upset at the water quality in the bay. They spent thirty-three years with agreements and, um, efforts to reduce it. And it wasn't until two thousand nine. And people there that I've interviewed and talked to say very clearly that the pivotal point was when Obama became president, he created an executive order, uh, from the federal government to help to manage and organize and make sure they got the reductions. And within eight years, the crab and oysters were back. I use that as the evidence of how this can work. So here we are at Lake Erie. We're only fifteen years, not thirty-three, but we're hoping that right now we have a new administration, a new opportunity. And an executive order would be, um, a Lake Erie executive order we're hoping would have the same impact, where we'd actually see the reductions and get what's needed. Next slide. So just to kind of go back in terms of what's been happening, who are the real, who are those that are really impacted by this, uh, the most? And I would suggest it's local governments. There are water plants, there are wastewater plants. Um, water plants have to pay more to treat, monitor, and sometimes have capital costs. Wastewater plants, of course, have had to upgrade to reduce their sewage overflows, costing billions of dollars. So local governments has, have stepped up and really helped water quality. Not always as willing as people wanted them to, because the cost is very high, and sometimes it's gone to court. But nevertheless, the history is, it's local governments that have really been helping the waters the most. And clearly, that's what happened in the sixties and seventies to bring Lake Erie back. Next slide. So at the same time, local governments are reducing. Just recently, this happened, and we had, um, the Ohio Department of Agriculture is proposing and has right now in the permitting process, as you can see, forty thousand more chickens, twenty-two thousand eight hundred more hogs, and eighty-four hundred and twenty, eight, eight thousand four hundred and twenty-four more dairy cows. This is the equivalent of building a community with about a quarter of a million people with no waste treatment, land applying at all, and hoping it'll stay in the ground. Next, and at the bottom of that, it's okay. It's my fault. So just recently, to document the impacts of these KPOs on communities on watersheds, the University of Wisconsin and Marquette University did a study over twenty-three years and showed that the amount of phosphorus, um, coming off of these, when you increase the KPOs, you get increased phosphorus downstream. It seems intuitive, but no one's ever documented that. Next slide. So here's, after the progress, here's what we want. We would like an executive order from the Biden administration to help to manage, the federal government to manage it. We want local governments to be at the table. Right now, local governments do not have a seat in what they call Annex Four, the Great Lakes Water Quality Agreement. And local governments, I think, can help to turn this around. Where local government water plants and wastewater plants are paying, I think they have a vested interest in it. And they were the ones that brought it back. The last time, it was through regulation that it made it happen. Hopefully, this year, this time with agriculture, it can be, it will be better. They'll find a mechanism to do it, but it's not happening. So here's what we would do. We have the city of Toledo, Lucas County, Sandusky, Timocog is in the process right now, Lakewood, Luna Pier, White House. If I'm missing anyone, I'm sorry. It's being considered in a number of other communities. By the end of this month, we will, um, go to the, uh, local governments and let you look at the executive, the draft executive order. A representative from each local government would then, um, edit and look at the documents. And that's what we would present to the administration, the Biden administration. Next. So I just want to reiterate, the reason for this is after fifteen years, it's widely agreed that there's been no progress. And while H two Ohio is making an effort, there's no documentation that that will work either. And that's what happened in Chesapeake. That's the history there. We really need a better management, better federal, kind of putting it together. We really need local governments to be at the table to say, this is very important. It's costing us a lot. And if the algae continues to get worse, the burden's going to be on the water plants and the intakes to deal with it. And we're the downstream recipients. We all kind of know that about ninety percent of this comes from agriculture. Um, we want to work with them. And let me just say that for the, um, agricultural community, the family farmers and those using commercial phosphorus have actually reduced their loads by about forty percent. Um, in, while they're reducing, the manure is increasing. So we're just not gaining ground on this because of that. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Hi, Sandy. I have a question for you.
Sure.
Is there any way that you could bring it forward? And I, as I recall, nineteen seventy three, the Water Act, the president, he signed it into effect. So this is obviously not a political effort, I mean.
No, not at all.
Or democratic.
It just happens to be, you know, the history shows that when Obama became president, that the Chesapeake people, and they're both parties, said, we haven't progressed at all. And they put together, and that, a district of U S E P A has an office in Annapolis, Maryland. I've been there. And the states and everybody, everybody, the same players would be at the table. But every year, I'm hoping we would have an accountability meeting. So on June thirtieth, you're going to see a lot of news about the algae forecast this year. I live on the lake. I'm kind of worried that it's going to be a bad year. Don't know. Okay? But I think we need another meeting every year to say, here's how much we've reduced. We're spending all this money, and we spent billions of dollars trying to motivate and get people. And what's been done is good. There's nothing bad about what we've done. It just isn't working. And I would suggest adding more animals to a watershed that's already saturated with phosphorus and has a problem is wrong, just period. And the only reason that slide was in there is because it just happened. And when it happened, I felt it needed to be called out.
Would you say that it's probably, um, Ms. Ben, would you probably say that it's a, it is a health hazard, if you will?
Oh, it's absolutely a health hazard. There's no doubt about that.
I have a question. This is Jam Attorney. Uh, as for adding more animals, it's not necessarily adding more animals, it's how they handle the waste, wouldn't you say?
Absolutely.
And wouldn't you also, uh, say that a lot of the problems with the animal farms happened when they removed regulation from the EPA to agricultural? Maybe we should push to move it back?
That's one effort. But the reality is nationally, this is not just a problem here in Lake Erie.
Oh, I know that.
It's a problem in the Chesapeake. It's a problem in Okeechobee. It's a problem in the Mississippi and the Gulf. And what has happened that I think most of us haven't realized is that we changed the way we do our meat and dairy industry. We went from family farmers, and I saw a slide from the H two Ohio presentation I thought was interesting. They pointed out that over time, the number of animals in the Maumee watershed went down. And the reason they went down, because the family farmers went out of business because they underpriced them, to be candid. And then it started going up in the nineties. The reason it went up is because they kept confining them. And the reality is, when you had a small number of animals, that you put the manure close to the barns, it wasn't too bad. But when you have, like, right now, there's almost seven thousand dairy cows that are going to be on one site in continental Ohio. Seven thousand cows produce the waste of about a hundred and forty thousand people. It's just you can't put it close enough to those barns to make it work. So the problem is you can't distribute it far enough because it's too costly. In Ontario, they have the same rules for fertilizer and manure. That's much better. Um, if it was that way, then you'd have fewer animals. We'd probably get more control on the project, on the process.
One of the things that also contributed to cleanup of the Chesapeake was, um, restocking the beds of the oysters.
There were a lot of things. Wastewater plants were a major contributor in the Chesapeake. I mean, it's not apples and apples. What is apples and apples is their oyster and crab industries went out of business. Here, local governments aren't out of business, because what we do is, when we get a problem, we pass it on to our users, right? Everybody who uses our systems, our water plants, pay the bill. So it's kind of an easy, and yet we have no control as a local government, do we, in terms of what's coming into our intakes? Because it's coming from upstream. So unless we get to a table and say, hey, we're paying, you're paying them, we're not seeing results, you know, we want to work together, but every year you're going to tell us how this money has been effectively used to actually get to that forty percent reduction that we all need. That's what this resolution's about.
Can you kind of address the, because it, right now, we have Governor, Governor DeWine and Mr. H two Ohio.
Right.
Why, what's your pitch on this extra stuff that you want us to take, where we're encouraging the Biden administration to sign an executive order, just to, you know, kind of make it the issue clear?
Sure. Um, well, there's three states in the U S in the western basin. It's Michigan, Indiana, and Ohio. Right now, each has their own independent domestic action plan. They're really, everybody does their own plan. There's no accountability in terms of getting those reductions. If the federal government manages it, and I'm hoping local governments will actually kind of push the states and say, hey, you know, H two Ohio, whatever, make it effective, make it, let's see how this forty percent is happening. I don't think unless we have that federal management, we're ever going to get there. Because we've been working on this Ohio plan, Michigan plan, Indiana plan, Ontario plan, which we don't have control over, obviously, in other countries. But if there's a federal management, and there's a federal accountability, and local governments are at the table finally saying, hey, we're all paying, we want this money to be. to be effectively used, we want to see those results every year, we want to do like the Chesapeake did, we don't want our intakes to be impacted. We don't want to keep having to treat to hopefully, nothing happens to the public and their health and animals.
Okay, so the main two points I would pull from that, and you can correct me if I'm summarizing this incorrectly, is, one, it needs to be a collaborative effort between states, which is why me reducing this to just what H2Ohio is doing is not enough. And then, two, there's no penalties. There's no, there's no putting feet to the fire, so to speak, on phosphorus reduction. Is that, is that accurate?
That's accurate. I would just add to that, that local governments are not, there is a collaborative called Annex Four, where the researchers and the states kind of report to the federal government that's there, but the federal government isn't leading it, and the local governments are not at that table. We need somebody, like in Chesapeake, it was the oyster and the crab people who tanked and were desperate. And I don't know if local governments are desperate enough yet, but I think, you know, what's happening in Toledo and all of our water intakes, you know, I'm hoping we're desperate enough to come over to the table with the federal government, the states, and the researchers and say, and Ag, and say, hey, we're spending all this money, we want to know what the results are, we want accountability. Every year, you tell us how much of that 40% has been reduced.
And then, one question, I guess, I would like you to address is, you know, in Toledo, it's kind of a different, different atmosphere. Once you, once you cross that river, you're in Wood County, and we have more of a rural setting to the southwest, right? What would you say to, you know, I can, I grew up in Pemberville, a lot of, lot of farmers out there, and they would wince at something like this. And what would you do to calm their fear, what, what would you say to kind of calm that fear?
I grew up in Milbury, so I grew up in Wood County as well. And I would say, as, you know, the president, Bill Myers, of our organization, we've had these conversations often, many of the family farms, what I call the crop growers, the row croppers, no one understands this issue. And the issue between fertilizer and manure is real. And there isn't a lot they can do. It's difficult. But I would say to them, we support you. We thank you for your 40% reduction you've had over the last two decades. We want to help you, but we want manure to step up and come to the same rules and the same realization. They put a lot of them out of business. So there is, there is, to think that the agricultural community is homogeneous isn't quite accurate. So, you know, we do support Ag, we want to work with them, but we also want reductions. And we don't want manure over applied, and we don't want it impacting our intakes for water.
Okay. Thank you. Those were my.
Sure.
One thing, if you don't mind, real quick, just for clarification on the PowerPoint It mentions that, at the very top of the Chesapeake Bay history of the 40% harmful pollution, that the agreement, was it 60% reduction in eight years? Is that 60% total, or is that?
No, there was a 60% of 100%, so, or 40%.
Okay.
Okay, so there, somebody told me at Timocog that was confusing, it still is, I need to change it, but it's 60% of the 40%.
Okay, because it says the exact agreement, 60% reduction in eight years. And so when I'm looking at that.
It was 60% of the 40%. That's what it should say.
Okay.
The finance director is nodding his head in understanding. I was the finance director in Oregon one time, by the way.
You're 60% to the goal of 40% reduction.
Right, a little over half. It probably should just say a little over half.
And one thing, I did talk to, to our county commissioner on the, the county CFO, and as of at least a week and a half ago, when I talked to her on that, that the CAFO had not yet been approved for Wood County. So that, even though that's proposed, I don't think it's been approved yet. So I don't know the factuality behind that, or if it's changed since that time I spoke with her.
No, it has not.
Okay. The, those, I think, were the only two questions I just wanted to make sure that I understood as well. So, thank you.
Sure. And just to understand, at the end of the month, June, we've kind of put this off because it's taken longer. It takes a while for people to digest this and understand and question and whatever. By the end of June, we'll start pulling the local governments that have passed this resolution together. You will get a say, whoever does that will have a say in doing the edits and things. Whoever comes in after that, we will certainly let people still be part of it. But once we get through that, I'm not going to go back and start all over again. At some point, it has to come to a head. We need to ask the Biden administration, we need to try to make this work. Does that make sense to everybody?
Ms. Ben, did I also see, through my research, I found that there was a 42% increase in CAFOs in Northwest Montana proper?
There's been, yes. And those are permitted and unpermitted. There's been, the amount of CAFOs that have located in the Maumee watershed, I mean, understand there were no CAFOs before 95, to your point. There were family farms before that, and many, many people had animals. But in, you know, in the 80s and 90s, it switched, and most of the people raising animals have now gone out of business, unless they're organic farmers. So, you know, but, so they, the 42% has gone up, but it was really 100% since 95 because that's when they came here and that's when they started. And that the number of CAFOs in the Maumee watershed today is the equivalent of about the waste of the whole state of Ohio, 11 million people, being deposited, land applied in the Maumee watershed. It's pretty, pretty ominous.
I have a question. You noted the local governments that, that supported this. Have you, have there been any local governments that have voted not to support it in our area?
No. So far, no. It's everyone that's presented has been accepted. Actually, I'm trying to think if it's been, it was unanimous, I know in Toledo, Lucas County, Lakewood, I think in Sandusky. It's been, close to, I don't want to make a statement that's not true, so.
I guess to clarify on Mark's, so I understand it. Has it been, have you made a presentation with any local governing body that they didn't make a motion or anything? I'm not, I don't necessarily care about the votes, but was there a presentation that was given and then it just never went?
Whenever I've made a presentation, it's been passed.
Okay.
It's different in each community, and I'll respect whatever you do, so please understand that.
And what, I guess, just one final thing from me, and I apologize for taking.
No problem.
What, can you just state specifically the timeline you're hoping for and what you're asking us to do, just to make it very clear?
We're asking for the support for the Lake Erie Executive Order Resolution. And the timeline to really be involved would be the end of June. And after that, any community that passes it will be able to be involved. But as far as the edits and the asks, and making sure that whatever your administration would want is in there, will kind of sunset to some degree. It's just because it has to come to a head.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thanks for caring about our Great Lake Erie. I can see the passion and everything in all of you, and those waters really deserve our help as much as we can. Thank you.
Thank you. So if anyone would want to make a motion, they can at this point. I will say that I really actually appreciate all bringing everything here to us and having this discussion. It has been a great opportunity to learn about everything that's going on within the lake and as well as the Lake Erie algae. My thought at this point is, I would actually prefer to see how H2Ohio continues to progress with all the money that we've already spent into that, just to see how things continue to move forward from everything. I'm looking at agriculture, still one of the big issues. And, I mean, I, at this time, I'm not going to make that motion, but if anybody else on council would, it would probably be the opportunity to do that.
I would make that motion.
I would second Corey's.
So what?
So I guess the motion would need to, I guess, join the.
To pass a resolution regarding the executive order?
The Lake Erie Executive Order.
We'd probably have to, I don't think we have anything formally drafted, but.
We don't have anything.
What's that?
We don't have a, are you, is there going to be a resolution, or are we just making a motion to?
To support the?
I'm not quite sure what you're.
I think, yeah, I think that would be my motion at this time. I know we had a resolution that Dr. Campbell provided us at one point.
We have adjusted this lately.
Yeah. I know that that has been adjusted. I do not have that in front of me currently, but from what I remember, after the edit, I didn't have any qualms with the language that was in there as it was written.
But if we're passing a resolution, we need to have a resolution in front of us, and we don't have that.
Make the motion.
Can we wait till next meeting? When is our next meeting?
You can make the motions, support the resolution, and have it officially pass at the next meeting if you wanted to.
That's what I'll do.
All right, so you're right. So the motion, as I understand it, is to support the proposed executive order resolution?
Yep, and have it presented at the next meeting.
Okay. There's a motion and a second on that, and to move forward with that for the next meeting. Any other discussion?
Yeah, just in terms of discussion, I know the administration was asked last time about how they felt about this, their opinion. There were some things we liked and things we didn't like. So maybe before, when that resolution comes, we could find out what our reservations might be from the administration.
A very reasonable request, and we will do that, provide that information to you prior to the next council.
Thank you.
My comment would be that while I greatly respect Councilman Smith's opinion, this piece, I almost screwed up and sent that order wrong. This piecemeal manner by which we're trying to clean up Lake Erie and ultimately the Great Lakes will not work. We need everybody, all stakeholders at the table, including Michigan, Indiana, Ohio, I think even New York is on the western end of, eastern end of Lake Erie and Ontario.
Pretty sure Buffalo would agree with that.
So doing a piecemeal does not work. We've seen that time and time again. We need a united front with all stakeholders involved.
I would, I would add to a bit of conversation that Jan had, and I happened to read the resolution that the city council passed, and I don't have any problems with it. I don't, I would, I would agree that we perhaps adopt the same one here.
I guess I'll just follow up with why I made the motion. I think there's one key thing in that, you know, the state of Ohio is not the only body that's across the Great Lakes. This is, to me, as Jan put it, I thought eloquently, this is all hands on deck kind of thing. And we need to be collaborative in that effort. And realistically, the resolution we're, we're going to propose as passing is the beginning of that collaborative effort, and it makes us a part and a trailblazer in that effort. I like the idea of Perry'sburg being involved in that conversation.
And I would also add that by doing so, us doing so and passing the resolution, we would be looking at future generations to come. That's something we need to be thinking about.
H2Ohio has really just begun this initiative, and I'm just wondering if we have, you know, given them enough time to work with this rather than before we get the federal government involved.
Yeah, my thought is the goal is the same regardless. That, that's the way I look at it. I respect that as well. I know H2Ohio is a new initiative, and, you know, I, the end goal's still the same, so I hope they're both successful.
Well, in the H2Ohio, also, they just, they, and I was wondering if your data supported that as well, that the, the commercial fertilizer seemed to be more of a contributor than the CAFOs.
The information on how much is contributing to the phosphorus in the Maumee is modeled, and we don't really have good data. And I'm just, that's the reality of it. So there's been reports that show, I remember 15 years ago, the contribution that was estimated for manure was 8%. I was at a Lake Erie Commission meeting, I attend them all, and they were saying now it's 8% after we've had all the growth in these number of animals. These are models, and so the reality is, we just don't know. And I don't want to argue the numbers because I don't have good facts to back it, and I won't do that. But the number of increases in the CAFOs and the amount of manure being applied to the ground is a fact. And I don't think it's been factored in. And I think the reality is that the commercial, even the commercial farmers that use the commercial fertilizer, or family farmers that use commercial fertilizer, have really done the four hours and a great job. And I sometimes think they're preyed upon more than this growing problem with manure. And I think it needs to be addressed. That's not what this resolution is about. It's about 40% reduction, and it is about local governments, folks, not having, Lunapier just got hammered by Michigan with having to put a half a million dollars of improvements in a very small stream. And had it discharged into Lake Erie, they wouldn't have had to do it. I would argue, had that been Ag, it never would have happened. But because they're local governments, and we have laws and we have requirements, sometimes it's not fair. It's not that they shouldn't be improving. Please don't hear me wrong. The septic, person with the failing septic system in Ottawa County right now, they're being required to pay an estimated $200 a month for improving their septic systems or putting in sewer lines. Does that need to be done? Absolutely. But upstream, they're adding 4,000 more cows, 80,000 more people's waste. Is that right? You know, how do you balance this? But if local governments aren't at the table, asking these questions, laws exist where they can pray and make us put less and less phosphorus while more and more is still coming into the system. That's not fair. So I want Ag to come to the table, want reductions, want Lake Erie to recover. Don't have all the answers. I think this process can, this is, by the way, the process that existed in the 70s and 80s, when they used to have a US EPA site in Gross Hill, Michigan, and they did what Chesapeake did. And it worked here. Because I worked, Dr. Reuters' predecessor was Dr. Herdendorf from Ohio State Seegrant. I've talked to him. I've got a 700-page manual. And I said, how did you manage the reductions that we got before? And that's what they did, exactly what Chesapeake did. But it seems nowadays, it will take an executive order to get us there.
Can you, can you maybe just expand on what you think the role of the federal government would be on us, how it would affect us locally right here in Perry'sburg?
I don't know that it'll affect right here, but if you have a seat at the table, and you're saying, our water rates are going up because we have to test, treat, and monitor more, we have to put in ozone or whatever to make sure there's no microcystin in our water, I don't think that voice is there. I know it's not. It's not in Annex Four committees. So I think if there's a better weighted, we're paying, we're the oysters and the crabs of the Lake Erie compared to Chesapeake, I'm hoping that'll push everybody into finding solutions that are very much needed. It was actually taking phosphorus out of laundry detergent that solved a lot of the algae problem last time. And that was giants like Procter and Gamble, and it was not easy. But for me, if you, you know, in Ontario, the number of animals there, dairy cows that you can have on a facility is about 500. Why is that? Because they require the same requirement for fertilizer as they do for manure. It's called the agronomic rate. So it's how much phosphorus can be in your soil at any given time to support the crops. And that's what Ontario does. Here, it's 150. And so, and H2Ohio makes you get down to 50. So my question to them is, hey, if you're, we're paying to haul to land with 50 parts per million of phosphorus for manure, why are you permitting 150 with all these new permits?
It's my understanding from the presentation that H2Ohio is actually saying, commercial fertilizer on the fields is not the issue. They're getting, they're, the farmer is in their best interest to be smarter about fertilizing, targeting, using GPS and various methods, and testing the soil in different parts of the acreage to see if it even needs it. Also, the other point I want to make, I have seen, I grew up in Port Clinton, my family has a cottage up in Michigan on the lake, and we had it there. My grandparents built it in the 40s. There was a couple of factory farms that moved in within the watershed, the Raising River. And we went from a very pristine lake that you could drink the water to, until we did some work and had some ditches moved, that was bringing affluence from these factory farms, to having algae blooms and bacteria counts. And it was the first time in 40 years, 50 years, I'd ever heard of that happening in this lake. Furthermore, let's say hypothetically, Ohio hits its goals with H2Ohio. What good is that going to do if Michigan and Indiana and Ontario does nothing?
Mrs. Ben?
Yes.
First of all, thank you for your passion, a lot of what's happened with the lake, and even here locally, is in large part because of your work. I am curious to your opinion, though, as to why the United States EPA, who has, was granted the authority in 2012 to take additional action, had to be taken to court and is still resisting the authority? had to be taken to court and is still resisting the authority that they were granted. Why do you put your opinion as to why that is?
You know, the Waterkeeper Board, and I don't know if Dr. Campbell will remember this or not, but we wanted to do TMDLs back in 2005, way back when. And our board was very hesitant, very supportive of the agricultural community, saying, wait, the state wants to do it. They're doing, Governor Kasich had a program, not called H2 Ohio, but something else, okay, putting money in the federal government. And it didn't work. So the reason it had to go to court is because, you know, Ohio EPA wouldn't, you know, they designated the near shore. It was kind of goofy the way they did it. But the impaired status is a part of the Clean Water Act that needs to happen, didn't happen without court action. And oftentimes, it takes court action to bring it there. This process, fortunately, thus far in Chesapeake, has been done, you know, there's some tugging in Poland. We don't all get along. We don't all agree. So I don't want to, you know, say it's homogeneous. It's not. But right now, they're ready to take the state of Pennsylvania to court because they're upstream from the Chesapeake. And they're not getting their numbers down to your point of the 40%, and they're the lacker, okay? So the states in the Chesapeake are actually looking at lawsuits to force to get the 40% from Pennsylvania, which is interesting. But if you all come together and everybody comes to a head where they kind of see where the problem's at, and you can identify it and zero in on it, say, here's where it's coming from, here's what it is, it's much easier to solve the problem. We're not there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time and your effort. All right, there's a pending motion. That's been seconded. We've had discussion. So, roll call.
All righty.
Should we have you remind us what that motion was?
Make them work. Yeah, make
I'm just kidding.
Thank you. Just look through the meeting minutes as well.
Well, it's about
Roll call, please.
Okay, roll call. Moving forward. Ms. Borne?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
No.
And Mr. Weber?
No.
Did you email a copy of the resolution over to, send it right off, just so that way you didn't have to search for your emails through that?
Did we actually get a word version of the
I just sent the word version over. Yes. Yep, Dr. Campbell had already sent that over, so I made sure to get it, just in case.
Would you please send it to everybody?
You have a copy in your file, basically.
Okay.
All right, very good. Thank you.
All right, and no further report from the Public Utilities.
Service.
We did meet. Meeting is called board, May 22nd. Jan Matroni, present, where myself and John Katsup and Bridget Cabot. The minutes from April 28, 2021 were approved. The only, well, no. Mrs. Cabot brought to us, in the Department of Public Service, a request to purchase a compact track loader from CAT. It's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, it was already in the budget, and we just needed to move forward with the purchase. Meeting agreed 2 to 0 to forward this request on to City Council. Other business, there's a brief discussion regarding COVID restrictions being lifted and the reopening of city facilities. Mr. Smith asked if the administration, asked if the administration is prepared, should there be any traffic issues, EcoJunction 25. Ms. Cabot said that they have discussed internally, and there's a plan in place. Mr. Smith raised concerns about pedestrian safety and lack of traffic control devices at several intersections in town. Ms. Cabot said she'll look into it. There being no further business, the meeting adjourned at 5:45. Next meeting is Wednesday, June 23, 2021. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Resolution 38-2021. We need the rules to be suspended. They're allowed for its reading by number and title only, and to be 252nd, 3rd readings.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Okay, Ms. Borne?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Resolution number 38, 2021. A resolution authorizing a purchase agreement with Ohio CAT for the purchase of one Caterpillar Model 299D3DCA6 compact track loader to the Perry'sburg Department of Public Service and above not to exceed $72,916 and declaring an emergency.
I move that Resolution 38, 2021 be passed as emergency measure.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
All right, Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Borne?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Committee, any other business before council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I attended the memorial, the event yesterday presented by the American Legion. And I would like to say that I would, I would, it was a very nice ceremony at the cemetery, Public Cemetery. And I hope that we will never forget those who served and who protect our country. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Borne. I will let the cemetery know as well. They take very big pride in that day.
You're welcome.
Yes, very nice. Any other business for this council? I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Close? That, adjourned.